I'd like to call to order the May 1st, 2013 Reno City Planning Commission. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have real call please?
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Kimberly Locke.
Here.
Paul Olivas.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item is public comment. This item is either for general public comment or for a public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak form. Do we have any forms at this time?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to close public comment. Item number four, approval of minutes of the March 20th, 2013 workshop and March 20th, 2013 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Commissioner Weiskie, so moved.
Commissioner Kaufman will second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Say nay. Do we have any abstentions?
Abstain.
Um, I think, let's see, workshop, you ready? No. Aye. I think I was there.
We do have one abstention.
Was I there?
Commissioner Olivas abstain.
Like the record show, we have one abstention.
Are you voting on both sets of minutes at the same time or are you doing a separate motion for?
I guess we should separate them. So this would be for the first one, the March 20th workshop. And the second one will be the 2013, or March 20th, 2013 regular meeting. All those.
So moved.
All right. Any opposed?
I'll second.
Any abstentions?
Commissioner Olivas abstain.
Like the record show, we have one abstention. Moving on to city council liaison reports.
I don't have any at this time.
Okay, the next agenda item is number six, appreciating and recognition of Dennis Romeo for his many years of service on the city planning, or the city of Reno Planning Commission. I want to first by walk over and present this certificate to you.
I just wanted to say personally, thank you very much as your vice chair. I really appreciated working with you, but I'm going to say my, the biggest impact that you had on me is when I was new on this board. And just wanted to say that your thoughtful questions, your dedication to the community, your views, even though we didn't always agree, I always really, really respected your view. And always appreciated serving with you. And I wanted to thank you very much for your service, your mentoring, and wish you the best of luck with your future endeavors.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Weiskie.
Dennis, thanks. Besides what Chairman Woosley has just said about you, you know, I came onto this commission and, and you were one of the two guys that immediately kind of took me under your wings and, and helped bring me along, not only here, but also at regional. And I certainly am grateful for it, but I guess the thing I'm grateful for the most is the friendship we've got out of this thing. And, you know, I've said it before, I'm going to say it publicly now, I've always got your back. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And on behalf of staff, we'd also like to thank you. You've been a cornerstone of the Planning Commission for many years and we really appreciate your dedication and service to the Planning Commission and the city of Reno.
Well, thank you for the kind words.
I'd like to make one comment, Dennis.
Okay.
Since you were the longest length person on the Planning Commission, and when I came on, same thing. I learned, I got to sit next to you, I got to learn a lot of knowledge and expertise that you had, and how respectful you were to every, everyone, once you were a chairman and so forth. And you set a great example, and I think we all appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thanks Doug. Well, and I'm going to say what I'm going to miss is you guys, staff, Fred, Michelle, and believe it or not, a lot of the people that I've worked with out here in the audience over the years. You develop friendships and we all go into this trying to do what's best for the city. And I think that's the motive that we all do it by. And I've enjoyed 13 years, so. Doesn't mean I'm going away. I'll be calling some of you in the future to do some other things with me. One of you have already done it, so thanks for the kind words. Thank you for this. I do appreciate it.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item. Presentation regarding flood planning and future development. Great, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm Carrie Lonza, I'm with the city of Reno Public Works. I'm a senior civil engineer. I'm the city's floodplain and flood and drainage program coordinator. I'm also the city's representative to the Truckee River Flood Project. And again, I'm with Public Works, I work with and for the community development as well. Tonight I'm here to introduce to you the city of Reno's flood and drainage program. The city of Reno ism, oh, sorry about that. Sorry, okay. And the city of Reno is a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, or NFIP as it's called. When a community joins the NFIP, it agrees to adopt and enforce minimum floodplain management standards. This program was established by Congress and is administered by FEMA. These standards are designed to prevent new development from increasing flood threats. We participate in the NFIP because the program ensures eligibility for federal disaster monies if a federal disaster is declared. And furthermore, participation in this program is the single most element that allows actually a private property owner to purchase flood insurance. I'm having difficulty. Understand, I'm not being heard, yes, thank you. This eligibility, this membership in the NFIP is the single most item that allows communities' membership and allows private properties to purchase private flood insurance as a protection against flood losses. Reno's flood ordinances do meet or exceed minimum FEMA standards and are contained in the Annexation and Land Development Code. RMC 1812 establishes the basis for flood hazard areas by adopting FEMA's flood insurance rate maps or FIRMs. And here is an example of a flood insurance rate map. This is just for one area and these are contained throughout all of Washoe County. I'll interrupt myself to tell you that FEMA from time to time does update the flood insurance rate maps. And this does cause either expansion and/or compression of flood boundaries as they use updated technical data to do this. These maps are auto adopted, or it is through our membership in the NFIP that we agreed to administer the maps and their changes, the FEMA, that FEMA has endorsed. Reno's opportunity to review the changes that FEMA maps are, when FEMA is making a map change, does occur through a limited window and is generally established on technical basis. And so your staff then does look out for the, does work with FEMA and does look out for the map changes that would be occurring. And in times, we have appealed and made technical endorsements or, you know, refutes of the map. We have been successful in changing these maps from time to time. Okay. 1812 does require that a grading permit for the development does capture all buildings within, relative to the flood zone. Buildings must be constructed at least one foot above the flood elevation. You cannot move or alter a water course without providing that same level of conveyance. And we can't just build something and walk away. Operations and maintenance plans for the ongoing maintenance of flood protection measures such as levees and dams are required to ensure ongoing and frequent maintenance. Further, the requirements, the requirements do require that we determine if the site itself is reasonably safe from flooding. And the proposal can't increase the flood discharge volume and velocity, that is the quantity or the speed exiting the development after construction. And this ensures that no property upstream or downstream will be subject to increased flood levels or velocities as a result of that development. We can't build in a floodway and applications for closed, and by, I'm sorry, can't build in a floodway and that floodway is typically the active channel. And it's flood fringes. And from time to time, we do see code for closed basins. A closed basin is an area that does not have an outlet. And so evaporation and seepage through the ground is the only way that the water can leave. This acts as a bathtub, so with, with the plug in, in which case if the water is added, the bathtub does fill up and rise and then therefore could cause problems for adjacent Whereas the flood insurance rate maps are towards the, the event that we would see every one in 100 years, this area has experienced an event that was considered perhaps greater than that, the 1997 flood event. And right here, I will introduce to you our provisions in what's called critical flood zone one, in which we actually regulate to a higher standard or that 120-year event. We're looking at the area, this purple area and yellow at the top is actually the depiction of the Truckee River. And you can see the McCarran Ring here, just east of the airport. Off to the far east is the Hidden Valley. And I suppose we're looking at Mariloma here, about middle of the picture. And so this area is known as critical flood zone one. The shaded area depicts where the floodwaters were stored in the 1997 event. Here is an actual picture from a helicopter looking, flying along the Truckee River and looking south into the U.N.R. area and towards the, what's called the Huffacre Narrows. This is also the area where the southeast connector will be, will be coming through. What happens if we allow unrestricted development in a flood storage area? This picture is to depict a flood storage area and an existing property built outside of the flood storage area, but adjacent to it. Now, the green that just filled in was intended to be blue. On my presentation, it's coming in different. Oh, here we go. In this picture, a very dramatic example of an unmitigated fill reduces the volume of available flood storage area, causing a rise in the base flood elevation. And this property, which was formerly next to, is now within the flood storage area. Whereas the prior slide present a very serious problem, this slide introduces mitigation by way of excavation such that the floodplain area is preserved. Our code deals with this in 1812-605. This ordinance came into effect after much technical study and public outreach and multi-agency and public coordination. In effect, what you just saw, that one volume of fill that was brought into an area then had to be excavated or mitigated. And then there are other technical requirements that allow this, that to occur without more extensive or robust flood modeling to occur. Now, in the event that that cannot happen, such as in large projects, we can run a hydraulic model, and that is the case for the southeast connector. And so the impacts of the roadway towards that 1997 flood storage volume will be evaluated through the use of a robust model. The Truckee River Flood Project, or the Flood Management Authority, was established in 2011 through inter-local cooperative agreement. The parties are the cities of Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. Now, the Truckee River Flood Project is developing a regional plan that addresses flooding from the Truckee River. And this has an anticipation for federal funding as well as a local funding component. Whereas this has been true, particularly now, there is very aggressive planning underway. As has been recently known is, the flood project is, as conceived in the locally preferred plan, is not an affordable project for this community. And currently, is being scaled back and redesigned in order to find a more happy medium. And so, and there is a deadline for a presentation to Congress of that plan, and that occurs at, so far at the end of this year, 2013, by and through the Army Corps of Engineers. So, the Truckee Flood, the Truckee River Flood Management Authority does have the ability through the powers, by and through us, to charge and impose rates once that project is known and is adopted by the flood authority. So far, the projects that have come into play have been through the 1/8 cent sales, Washoe County sales tax that has occurred. That sales tax has a limited remaining fund life and therefore is not going to be adequate to fund the remainder of the project. Now, and so therefore, the flood project plan does require an additional rate to be imposed once the benefits are known. FMA is not a regulatory authority, although they may propose regulations to the entities. And we have, we have agreed through our, I'm sorry, through our agreement, we have allowed for their comments on master plan updates, planned unit developments, and new development projects which could impact the flood project. Whereas I've just spoken about the Truckee River Flood Project, or introduced that, I want to let you know that the city of Reno has a variety of other flood areas that will not be addressed through the Truckee River Flood Management Authority. And so, it remains a challenge to both identify and prioritize with limiting funding all the flooding areas that are occurring in the city. One thing that has been a success is we do have a Public Works flood response plan that does plan for the flood fighting of critical facilities. And we were able to at least implement that and try that out here in the two, in the most recent November 2012 event. And so additionally, as I talked about, we do work with FEMA from time to time as they progress flood map changes to analyze and respond to those flood map changes. And so with that, I'd like to appreciate your time and let me see if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I have a question. Commissioner Kaufman.
You said, they must build one foot above the flooding. Is that a 100-year floodplain? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. We do, we do require a one foot above the FEMA or the base flood elevation as it's determined in those FIRM maps.
So, yeah, what's a base flood? You know, that's what I didn't understand.
So, the mapping that I introduced is, has an elevation associated with it. And typically, if the study that is tied to that mapping does reveal to us what the elevation is, and therefore what the minimum elevation of a structure should be.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, because we get from time to time, certain questions about in the floodplain. Somebody wants to develop in the floodplain. And the mitigation, you know, could be a one foot, could be, you know, and I, who goes and checks that?
Okay, and so our ordinance, I think what I did not mention was that the ordinance that was imposed, this one-for-one mitigation, was based on a technical study that occurred. So this critical flood zone area had many scenarios put to it, as far as what would be the appropriate mitigation for that area. And it was determined that, through the hydraulic modeling, that the one-to-one did preserve the flood volume storage. And so therefore, that, that's been the basis for that ordinance.
Okay, okay. But who regulates that?
I'm sorry.
Who, you know, that's, what I'm saying is, we have a developer that goes in, does a building, you know, who goes back and checks that mitigation?
Oh, certainly. And, and of course, that is by and through our community development department, together with myself, in which case the models are provided. And in some cases, it's very easy, they have been able to provide storage in the same storage area. I brought a, I don't know if you want to get too much into this, but this is, um...
Obviously Bill wants to say something.
Okay, very good.
But don't go away, because I have one more question.
For the record, Bill Goss, senior civil engineer with community development. We would get a set of construction drawings for any application for grading within the critical flood pool or any other development for that fact. Those are stamped by a, by a civil engineer and verified. Any of these developments, of course, will have their grading, and we'll have geotech or a civil engineer and land surveyor associated with those that will verify at the end of construction that those plans have been constructed per plan. And if any modifications have been made, they would submit those for us to verify as well. So they, I mean, we are requiring that the developer have a civil engineer or a land surveyor in place to modify, to verify those, that the plans have been completed and constructed per plan.
So, once, once they pull the permits, you have those plans and then that goes, you know?
Yeah, we approve the plan sets, that we verify that their calculations are correct, that they have provided the mitigation on those plan sets. And then, at the end of construction, we will also go out with them and verify that the construction is done properly through our inspections as well. And then they do submit letters certifying that their grading has been completed per, per plan that is approved. As well as any building elevations, they have to file an elevation certificate from a professional land surveyor, that their building heights have been submitted and have been completed to meet that one foot above the base flood elevation as well.
Okay. That, that really answered my question. Other one, thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions? Commissioner Weiskie.
On the connector, is that inside the, the floodplain area? And if it is, how was that mitigated?
Okay, and certainly, so the southeast connector phase one, which is under progression right now, is actually within the city of Sparks, who does not have the critical flood pool ordinance. However, they have had to meet the FEMA criteria of the things that we just discussed, the no rise, the no impact to other properties. And so, they have demonstrated that phase through the modeling. And they have been able to preserve the floodplain through that. Phase two, which is coming to the city of Reno, is also something that they are at about a 30% plan development right now. And as they get a little bit further, they will be providing that technical information to your staffs.
Okay, thank you.
Could, could I follow up on that? What, um, why, why is that almost after the fact? I guess, why do they provide the plan? You know, it, and you made that comment, kind of in your presentation, that, you know, this connector's going to go through and, and there, you know, we know it's going to go through, but there's no plan for it yet. I, yet...
I see what, okay. I think what you're asking is, why perhaps we have to check that later? Why it's not available to us right now? And part of that is they are refining their alignment and their elevations. So, as they model the culverts and figure out how many are going to be there, then they can provide to us the analysis and show us that it works.
And to add to that, Claudia Hansen, planning engineering manager. Phase one is, I think, all within the city of Sparks. That's right. Which she mentioned earlier.
Which is a bridge?
And most of phase two, a bridge plus a little bit more, but it's all in the city of Sparks. Phase two, I think is 99% in the city of Reno. Might be a little bit in Washoe County, I'm not sure. But that's going to come forward as a special use permit. So the phase one did not trigger a special use permit in the city of Sparks. Phase two does trigger special use permit in the city of Reno. So you, we anticipate them applying for that this summer. So that will come before you, before construction, obviously.
I guess what I'm, I guess a point I'm trying to make is you, you, we have homeowners and so forth out there that are uncomfortable with that going through for, but it's almost like we're putting the cart before the horse that, you know...
Well, RTC has done a number of outreach efforts, I guess, over...
Okay.
Couple years, few years probably, and are doing those more frequently with specific interest groups out in that area. For the, what's under construction now is not in our jurisdiction. The upcoming phase, your review of that at the Planning Commission is just that technical special use permit and not the other issues. So that's the only thing that triggers the review by the, by the Planning Commission. There have been other efforts by RTC on the development of the southeast connector.
Claudia, can I maybe ask a question that might help clarify it? It's my understanding, because I've been, had the opportunity to look at some of the preliminary documents, that RTC and the engineering staff has done some preliminary numbers and design work to know that the mitigation is available. I was just, my question started off, has it been developed yet so that we know where it is and what it looks like? But the preliminary numbers, the calculations, I should say, show that there is enough area for mitigation for this new roadway, correct?
That is correct. And we do have a working group in the city of Reno staff.
And I think that's what Commissioner Kaufman was getting at.
Okay, Bill and I from community development are on that. Carrie and a number of other people from Planning Commission, or from, sorry, Public Works are on that. And we have also included fire department, police department, cycling groups, homeowners associations, the Wild Horse Group, everybody, they have a long list of people that they're including in those conversations. But we do have, from Public Works and from community development, a technical staff that's reviewing that.
Okay. And I think where Commissioner Kaufman and I are coming from, at least with my question leading into it was, because of some developments around the western edges that we've looked at over the last six to 12 months, you know, we're always asked, well, where's that mitigation going to go? It already filled with water, how's it going to work? And then we've got a roadway going in on the east side of, of this area. And I was just wondering if, and, and you answered my question.
Thank you.
That, you know, the, the design is only 30% right now, we don't have something to look at, but something with specifics will be, you know, available soon.
Yes.
And, and Carrie, I thought your visual of how they mitigate it, the two visuals, one where they don't mitigate it, and, you know, the house floods, and the other one where they mitigate it. And it, you know, is great for other developers, example of some of the people that have come before us who, some of the public can't understand that mitigation. So, and that's what I was really kind of trying to get at. That actually was a great visual and...
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks to Carrie and also for staff for organizing this and having Carrie come. We discussed, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, having a presentation like this because, you know, we've seen a couple projects that have, they're in, that have floodplain issues and, and where the mitigation comes into play. And I just think this is a really important education piece for our Planning Commission and a good discussion. So, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, and thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, item number eight, public hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment with the public hearing is heard will need to do so indicate on a request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide the comment when item number three, public comment, is heard at the beginning of the eighth meeting. Our first case number is LDC 13-00048, Popeyes. May we have the applicant representatives up to the podium, please? Please state your name for the record, you'll have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Hi. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of the applicant. We are requesting a special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through. Are you schnickering at my crutches, Claudia? Feel free, that's all right. A special use permit is required in, in this zoning category. We're, we're talking about a new fast food restaurant, about 2,600 square feet into an existing shopping center. I, I think it's a good addition to that center. The center is currently underutilized, so this will bring some new life to it. And in fact, in the immediate term, will act as a bit of an anchor for the center. So I, I think it's a, a good revitalization of the area. I think it's a, a good revitalization of the area. In terms of city code and planning, we're bringing an existing center into closer conformance with the existing zoning. I, I'd like to also mention that the, that the owner of this is a, a local businessman with a strong track record in, in these kind of operations. So I think there's a, a good likelihood of success. We, I, I think it's a simple project. We agree with the staff report with one comment. The property owner would be more comfortable with identifying on the record that we have a shared parking arrangement across the entire center. We have plenty of, there's hundreds of parking spaces. We have, we have plenty of parking. The staff report mentions a specific number, does not identify that as a condition. But nonetheless, the, the property owner is more comfortable with the statement that we will adhere to code and not give the impression that certain spaces are identified with this use. The uses are, the parking is shared across all the uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have staff, please?
Good evening, Verne Close, Senior Planner. The request before you for the drive-through meets all the code requirements of the MU CRC zone. Staff is recommending approval subject to conditions. Receive no phone calls, letters, comments, and this project is also reviewed by the NAB. Be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask for disclosures from any replaying commissioners. Do we have any disclosures?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, I had a phone call with the applicant's representative.
Great, thank you very much. Next, this time, I'd like to open public comment. Do I have any request to speak forms?
No, we do not.
Great, thank you very much. Close public comment. All right. At this time, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for questions, comments. I'll even take a motion in a second. Commissioner Stapleton?
In the case of LDC 13-00048, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions. I can make the findings. Commissioner, walk seconds.
Great. All those in favor, by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing, by saying nay. Let the record show the motion passed, seven to zero. Good luck with your project. Thank you.
You want to help get into your graphic?
Next, I'd like to call LDC 13-00049, Boomtown Casino Travel Plaza Restablishment.
What? Get some crutches.
May I please have the applicant representative step over to the podium, please? Please state your name for the record. You'll have 15 minutes for your presentation.
Okay. Can I get organized before my 15 minutes starts?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I have a lot of papers. She's pulling up the presentation. I want to put this over here. Okay, for the record, Cynthia Albright, Stand Tech Consulting, recor, uh, standing here on behalf of the applicant. Fortunately, though, I'm not alone in this room. I have Trey St. John behind me, who is an owner of, one of the new owners of Boomtown Casino. I have Ross Shaver from Pilot Flying J. And of course, you all recognize Gordon Garrett from Lewis and Roca. So collectively, we will be handling this presentation. I'll go through the vast majority of it, and then I'm going to turn the last two slides over to Garrett. And then we're all here to answer any questions. Let's see, and I have to use the arrow key, right? Okay, well, as you all know, we are here to request your approval for three special use permits and a variance application. Just real quickly, the special use permits are to establish, reestablish and enlarge a pre-existing non-conforming truck stop in hotel casino zoning, reestablish a previously existing non-conforming restricted gaming use without hotel rooms, also in hotel casino gaming, zoning, and a special use permit to allow for this use to operate within a 24-hour time period. The variance application is to reduce the minimum distance from any residentially zoned parcel from the minimum of 1,320 feet for, to 250 feet, because it's measured from parcel line to parcel line. You know, this property was owned back in 2008 to Hotel Casino, and it followed with a special use permit approval after Cabela's was built. The Reno Municipal Code sections obviously allow us to expand and resume this use, and that's what this application seeks to do. The truck stop requirements were added after that 2008 approval, limiting that separation. And we believe, and we have intended, to mitigate those distance requirements according to the adjacent property owners in accordance with all of their requests. Let's see. I just have a, I want to go through a couple of graphics that I've put together using the historical mapping, the historical aerials, and the historical parcel base. This pretty much shows what we were looking at back in, before Cabela's was constructed in 2005, probably as early as 1964. Unfortunately, I brought a pointer. I remember to bring it, but I didn't actually use it, and the, the light is dead, so I can't actually point. But you can kind of see that originally, the off-ramp, the I-80 westbound off-ramp, pretty much dumped the drivers to Bill and Effie's truck stop out there, right onto the parcel that was out there, and the existing parcels that are residential or to the west. This shows the boundary line of the two parcels that were the subject of the original truck stop. There were a total of 40 acres. It's been this parceling since 1964. And if you measure the distance edge to edge from the original truck stop and casino, from the red line on the west to the closest residential parcel, we were 475 feet way back then. In making way for Cabela's, the property owners actually parceled through a series of successive maps to create a parcel that they could sell to Cabela's, which is shown in the middle of that area. That was the historic parcel for the truck stop. And then the parcel to the west was the designated location to relocate the truck stop in Travel Plaza Two, once the Cabela's property was actually constructed. This shows that mapping, where we have, now we have Cabela's that's existing, and the parceling to show the 22-acre site that was the subject of the special use permit that was approved back in 2007 to relocate the truck stop in Travel Plaza that previously occupied the Cabela's parcel. This shows you the actual location within the 22-acre parcel that we intend to resume and operate, the truck stop in Travel Plaza. It's about a 14-acre portion of the 22 acres. And you can see, based on the original footprint of the parcel base, it roughly occupies the same location that it did back since the 1960s. There's been a lot of precedent leading up to today's request, starting back in 2001, when the property was actually annexed. Then there were some Mortons and Design Guidelines standards that were adopted. Originally, back in 2005, there was an application to relocate the Boomtown Truck Stop, followed with the application back in 2007, LDC 07200299, which was approved by the Reno Planning Commission to relocate that truck stop on the parcel that we're currently asking the part, the project to be located on. As we all know, that, that special use permit expired. And then following that activity in 2008, there was a remapping of some zoning and the designation of hotel commercial zoning, which allowed for a slightly fewer acres of hotel casino out there and more acres of that arterial commercial. This is our proposed site plan. Generally speaking, we have the 22-acre footprint of the parcel. We have isolated the development on the east side of those 22 acres within the area as shown. I'm showing you the historic gaming premises. That was an attachment to your staff report, a mapping that designated that. I believe it is Exhibit C, which, through those parcel maps, dedicated this specific area for the casino. And I'd like to put, oh, I can't actually, I can't actually do that with this up there. But I do have the original letter from Lionel Sawyer and Collins that was written to Marilyn Craig back in 2007, that attached that recorded map to the letter with the reference that it was the truck stop relocation parcel configuration. So our position has been that we might have a historic gaming premises of 11.4 acres, but the truck stop and the gaming operations were always hand-in-hand, always meant to be out there, and always meant to be on this parcel that we're requesting this use on post-construction of Cabela's. The site itself, we are including a 22,000, 23,000-square-foot building, has restaurants, convenience store, that, obviously, the accessory uses for the truckers. There are six fueling stations for the autos and RVs, propane fueling, 152 auto and RV parking spaces, nine fueling dispensers for the trucks. We have 27 engine idle reduction technology spaces, which is about 25% of the total parking spaces. City code requires we provide 15, so we've exceeded that number. We also have clean energy fueling dispensers for liquid natural gas and, and CNG. And then, to comply with code, we've added a dog park and recreation area to satisfy our recreational amenity. We figured, based on this type of use, a dog park and recreation amenity would be appropriate to have picnic tables and trees and areas for people to walk their dogs that come to this particular site. Lastly, we have a walking path that's required for the Mortons and Garson Overlay District that connects to Boomtown Garson Road on the west and the south sides of the property. Our architectural elevations show that we intend to be consistent with code, certainly consistent with the Cabela's and the theme in the Mortons and Garson Overlay District with the use of natural earth tones, stucco, various colors, textures, awnings, windows, and articulation in our long wall planes. We will break that up with a required five-foot landscaping that's required all around the building, all four sides of the building, adjacent to the building. We have a landscape plan that meets code, actually exceeds code, both in terms of the area that's required for the landscaping based on the hotel casino zoning. We have 265 trees. We have an increased setback on the west side that's closest to the adjacent residential. City code requires us to have 10 feet. We have approximately 40 feet, 265 trees on the entire property, and a massive tree screen on the west side, which will also be bermed to add the overall height on that area. And what happened to that graphic? That's weird. There is a graphic there. Let me go back to our site plan. Let me see. No, sorry about that. There's a graphic on the PDF. Well, anyway, I apologize for that. That graphic would have shown you that in a general driveway configuration, you have the, the, the entry into the driveway typically has just rounded configuration with the curb. And what we're going to do is, we're going to design them in such a way that it's going to force the drivers to only turn right when they come out of this particular project. So there is a median that currently exists on Boomtown Garson Road. So there's a portion of the street frontage that we, drivers couldn't turn left anyway to go to the west, because there's a median there. But our furthest driveway to the west is not actually impacted by an existing median. So we're going to redesign the driveway entrance in such a way that forces the drivers to only turn to the right when they go out. So even if they thought about going left, there's going to be like a bump out, if you will, in the driveway opening that would prevent them from going left. Coupled with the fact that we have a tremendous amount of signage within the site of Pilot Flying J, to direct drivers of automobiles, as well as trucks, on where to go, where to exit, where to enter, in order to mitigate any trucks that inadvertently want to turn left and go west and head towards the adjacent property owners. We had a, a community outreach effort. We've met with, um, the Boomtown community. This map shows you the invitations that were mailed. There were 240 invitations mailed. They were invited to come to the Boomtown Casino. We made the presentation. We had 23 folks that showed up. It was a very nice evening, and I believe we answered all of their questions. On April 18th, we met with the Northwest NAB. The adjacent neighbors also attended that meeting. And then again, at the request of Bonnie Weber, we attended the, an impromptu Verde CAB meeting. There were 140 emails sent to everybody out in the Verde area, because the cab is currently not functioning in the Washoe County. So they have an email list that they invited all the folks that they have to come to the meeting. And we had 10 recipients, or 10, 10 guests there, plus Commissioner Bonnie Weber, and then the adjacent property owners. We have met several times with the adjacent property owners, and I have done, we have done collectively our very best to address their issues and their concerns. I had asked them for a letter. I have a, a new letter from them that I will give to Michelle. It basically is the same letter, except I had asked her to have all four property owners, Lynn and Lori, and their husbands, all sign the letter. But the letter I have in my hand is the same letter that you have up there. And we can go down the list, and which I'll do on the next slide. But basically, all of the bullets that you see on the letter, I have checked, 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 checked. We've included all of those improvements in our planning efforts, and they have been made conditions of approval in the staff report. Just to give you the visual graphic of what those improvements are and the agreements that we've made with the adjacent property owners. Part of the problem that they experience, like I said, is trucks that tend to head westbound on Boomtown Garson Road, which currently dead ends. And we are going to put a turnaround on our property, asphalt turnaround on our property in order to mitigate that. So there is a place to turn around. It's a 100-foot radius. We'll have additional signage to notify drivers to not come down here, and that it's a dead-end street. Also put, uh, put a do-not-tresspass sign on the property across the street, so that they're not encouraged to drive onto the adjacent property owner's property. We'll put an electric gate to keep resident, or keep visitors from coming onto their property. 850 linear feet of split rail fence. We'll do a 600 linear feet of double-row tree planting, 30 feet on center, to provide a tree screen. That will also include shrubs as an understory with forsythia and things like that that grow up. So visually, there'll be a screen there. And that's about it. Oh, and in the addition, if there's, there will be base material for the turnaround. So we will put that on their, the roadway that they use to get to their property, just to keep the dust out. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett to talk quickly about the special use permit and the various aspects, because it's a very technical request, and I want him to cover that part.
Mr. Chairman, commission for the record, Garrett Gordon with Lewis and Roca. I'm going to touch on the variance, but first give a little bit of background of how we get to the variance. So under Reno code, we're in 1808-502C, and this allows us to file the applications we filed today. If I'll go through it, a lawful use of non-conforming land or buildings. So we have two non-conforming uses here. One is non-restricted gaming. You're, you're supposed to and required to do 200 rooms. The truck stop as originally configured did not have those rooms. Thus, are, we are re-establishing that use to do non-restricted gaming without 200 rooms. Secondly, a truck stop. It was a lawful use at the time. It complied with zoning. Currently, it does not comply with zoning. The, truck stops are prohibited in the HC zone. So this provision here allows us to go back in time, and you see the word resume, resume to non-conforming uses the current day. The third piece is the truck stop standards. Those are standards tied to the truck stop, tied to whether or not we can do a truck stop. So it's our argument that a truck stop, that we're, we're re-establishing a truck stop use that's prohibited, thereby, we shouldn't have to comply with minimum truck stop standards that came into play after the truck stop was demolished. And I'll touch on that a little bit more on the, the next slide. But the, the next piece, which is really important, is that not only are we re-establishing and resuming a non-conforming use, but we're also required to come in closer conformance with code. So the minimum truck stop standards I mentioned, and I have them here, there's three pages, 15-plus, we would argue, and I think code would agree, that we're resuming a non-conforming use, aren't required to comply with zoning, having a truck stop in HC, which is currently prohibited, or the minimum truck stop standards. But in an effort to get in closer conformance with code, we're complying with every single one. Every single one of these truck stop standards, except the one that's a physical impossibility, the one that mentions you cannot have a truck stop within 1320 feet of residences, of, of a residential property. The original truck stop was not within, was, was within that 1320 feet. The re-establishment of the truck stop will be within 1320 feet. So I would say, and here are the findings for the variance, number one, this is certainly an extraordinary, exceptional situation or condition where, if I may just have another minute or two to touch on this, Mr. Chairman?
30 more seconds, please.
Finding them, finding number one is... Finding number one is an exceptional situation or condition. A, we had a truck stop. B, it was located within 1320 square, 1320 feet of residences. That was demolished. We have a right to bring back that use, to bring back a truck stop that is currently prohibited in the zoning district. We have a right to bring back gaming without the hotel rooms. But we're told we don't have a right to bring that back without complying with the physical impossibility of re-establishing this use within 1320 feet. So I would argue that it's certainly an exceptional situation, given it was outside of our control of demolishing it, and then new truck stop standards were enacted outside of our control, thereby, we cannot comply with the one that is physically impossible. Finding number two, we agree with the staff report, that could be, that finding can be made, given we're resuming a project that never was within, never was outside 1320 feet. Finding number C, I believe also certainly can be made, what Cynthia just described, that it won't be materially detrimental, specifically to the property owners, to our northwest, because of all the mitigations. Every single mitigation they asked for, we complied with. And finally, the last finding, consistent with the intent and purpose of this title. One, the title allows us to re-establish nonconforming uses. The title requires us to come into closer conformance with code. We've done both. We're bringing back two nonconforming uses, and we're doing our very best to comply with every single new code and new requirement on the books, except one, the one that's physically impossible to be out, to be outside of that range. So hopefully, that provides a little bit of additional evidence regarding the findings for the variance. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff, please.
Good evening. Vern Close, Senior Planner. The applicant went through a lot of the history on the site, so I won't repeat that. I did want to go through some of the SUP discussion. At this point, what they're requesting is to re-establish a nonconforming truck stop use. But if you look at the information they showed, the existing, the truck stop that was existing was only on a small portion of the site that they have in front of you. So from that standpoint, they can re-establish the truck stop on that portion through the nonconforming special use permit process. In order to expand the nonconforming use, they have to actually have established a nonconforming use in order to establish it. So at this point, they are requesting those special use permits and also a variance to reduce the spacing requirements of 1320 feet. Obviously, the original project that they're trying to re-establish did not meet that standard, and it doesn't meet it now. The code changed, and from our perspective, you know, that's a requirement that they should be making. They have done a lot of mitigation that could mitigate what the impacts would be, and also considering that there is residentially zoned property there, but a majority of it is vacant. And they have, again, mitigated a lot of the impacts that could come about by re-establishing and expanding the use with the mitigations for the residential properties to the northwest. So based on compliance with the applicable findings, the applicable general and nonconforming special use permit findings, staff can recommend approval of the special use permits to re-establish the pre-existing nonconforming truck stop, to re-establish a non-restricted gaming operation without hotel rooms, and to allow uses adjacent to residentially zoned property and for 24-hour operations. However, because of the 1320-foot non-compliance, which is finding D, staff is having a difficult time making that finding. Also, based on inability to recommend approval of the variance, which would allow establishment of the non, or to expand the nonconforming use, staff can't support that either. Again, we do believe that essentially, a majority of the standards that need to be complied with to establish both the uses haven't met, but technically, it's not meeting those other requirements. At this point, or again, you folks received a letter from the Health Department related to the truck portion of this. It discusses county emissions and idling regulations. The letter also discusses idling reduction technology and to reduce air emissions and improve air quality. And there is a requirement or an indication that they would like that increased, the amount of idling reduction technology. County air quality staff is here to make a modification to that recommendation, and I'd like her to speak to that after I finish with my presentation. The project was reviewed by the Ward 5 NAB, the Verdi Cab. And in addition, as Ms. Albright indicated, they met with the neighbors within a half-mile, and it basically indicated they had no concerns with the project. Staff did not receive any letters, calls, or emails with regard to this project. And one other thing, when you do make your motions, because this has to go to the council, you should indicate that you move to recommend that city council approve or deny whatever portion of the project that you're considering. With that, I'll turn that over to Charlene with Air Quality.
Good evening. For the record, Charlene Albee. I am the permitting and enforcement branch chief of the air quality management division at Washoe County Health District. The planning and monitoring branch at Air Quality had taken an interest in this project a little late in the game, so that's why you guys received the letter out today. Upon drafting the letter and coming up with their recommendations, I started doing a little bit of research in preparation of coming into the commission tonight. Based on my reference checks and looking to see what was actually in practical application in truck stops across the country, I found anything from a zero emission reduction tech to a maximum of about 70%. Working in a permitting and enforcement, we, I look at reduction of emissions. And so if I can find about 50%, that's a pretty significant reduction. And so we thought between, you know, 30 and 70, 50 looked pretty good, that that would be a good number for us to recommend increasing. We support the project. It's a lot easier for us to enforce our idling regulations when we have the trucks centrally located, as they would be at a truck stop, rather than what we have right now. When the pass is closed, they're just scattered. You know, they're lining the streets, they're lining the highways, they're in the grocery store parking lots. We get a lot of complaints from citizens because they have trucks parked right outside that are idling, you know, it's rumbling their houses. So if we can get a facility for them to locate at, that makes our job easier, it has less of an impact on the residential neighborhoods. After the letter was submitted, I did receive a call from Cynthia over at Stan Tech, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion and conference call regarding our request to go to 50%. There was a lot of technical background information that we had not received, that we didn't know about, such that the, for an example, the installation of those spaces take up a significantly larger amount of room than just having a regular parking space where the trucks can line up in parallel. On the map that she had showed you earlier, it showed some slanted parking spaces that are on the very west end, which are actually closest to the residences. Those are the idle reduction spots. They located them on that side so they could actually get the trucks that may be idling further away from the residence, so that they would actually increase it, a buffer zone between the two residences. They explained to us that the city ordinance was 15%, and that they're actually proposing 25, and based on the configuration of the property, the size of the design and everything else, that they really can't feasibly go any higher than 25% idle reduction. We talked about it. We understood their theories, and we accepted it, and we're happy to have the 25%. I did a bunch of research on the Pilot Flying J website for all the projects that they have under construction now, which was a really significant list. And this is the only one that actually has the idle reduction technology. So we could really appreciate the fact that they were going to put that in here and provide the citizens at least that much of a benefit. So if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Do we have any questions? Great, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call for disclosures from our commissioners. I'll start at Commissioner Stapleton.
Yeah, I had a conversation with the applicant representative.
Commissioner Olivas. Yes, I had a conversation with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Wieske, as have I.
I as well.
Commissioner Locke as well.
I also had a conversation, and I think I received one email.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open public comment. I do have several request to speak forms, as well as ones I need to read in the record here. The first one is just, is a, does not wish to make a statement. Their name is Eugene and Patricia, and they believe it will help the employment. Do not have a last name on this, but it's P.O. Box 894, Verdi, Nevada. Next one is, does not wish to make a statement, is in favor, and the name is Lori Archibald. Comment is, "I really don't want a truck stop next to my house, but I feel like there's no choice. I know that the city is in favor of growth, jobs, et cetera, but have concerns about my..." The next is a letter we received, and it says, "To the Reno Planning Commission and City Council." This is, "We are the residents of the Blue Heron subdivision, which is across the I-8 freeway, south of Boomtown travel stop site. We attended the informational meeting on April 8th, where the plans for the Boomtown travel stop, travel stop re-establishment were presented and discussed. We were concerned about water security, road, and lighting issues. We are satisfied with, that these issues have been addressed and researched, and the results of their research were provided. We are in support of the Boomtown travel re-establishment. We are the residents of the Blue Heron subdivision, when the former Boomtown truck stop was in operation, and we see the need for a facility for truck drivers and travelers. Sincerely, Calvin and McGoney Dinkum." Next, we have Susan Legore, does wish to make a statement.
My name is Susan Legore for the record, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of my husband, Philip Legore, who couldn't be here this evening. He has, is dealing with an illness, so I said that I would come on his behalf. We actually live across the freeway at an area called Belleie Ranch, so Blue Heron is the area right before you go into the subdivision called Belleie Ranch. I have several concerns. I think that the project has, there's clearly been some efforts to mitigate, and we have some concerns about some issues, one of which was just brought up now, and that's in terms of the air pollution. It appears that they're talking about 27 spaces, 27, if I'm, I'd like to be just, I'd like to get that clarified. They were saying these were engine idle reduction spaces. Is that correct, 27? Does anybody know for the record if that's the case?
We can ask this question later.
Right. And by the way, some of the things I may be saying may not be germane to this venue. If that's the case, you'll please inform me. What is the correct venue for that? In terms of that number of spaces and the number of trucks that can't make it over the summit, 27 is going to be a very small amount. Your own staff said that 50% seemed to be a reasonably good reduction amount, and yet seems comfortable with 25%, which I seem to understand is what the facility is willing to provide. I commend them for making any efforts, but, you know, am concerned that 25% is, and that may only be for those that are in that noise, that idle reduction area. So air pollution does seem to be an issue. Very concerned about the bridge. Those of you who know that area know that the bridge is quite narrow, and it's already a bit of an issue now, and when you add back the trucks after Cabela's has been now put in place, I think you have some real concerns. I think that, I don't know, again, if that's something more that has to go through NDOT and DOT, but it is a concern, and the bridge is a concern to those of us who live in that area. And as far as, it was not brought up at this meeting, so I cannot say whether there are issues about signage with the McDonald's or any of the signs for the truck stop itself. Given that this is a scenic corridor, again, we've seen this many times, but I will bring it up again for my husband, Philip, that we have concerns about those signage issues. And again, I'm not sure where that, where they're going to land with those. Finally, noise, noise, and, well, there is light pollution, but noise pollution as well. We are concerned with downshifting and those issues that have in the past been there, but this is clearly a larger facility, and we are hoping that there can be some mitigation considered for that noise. We have, ourselves, see the idea of putting up a wall, as has been done in other areas. Again, this may be an NDOT or a DOT matter, but I did want to bring it to the attention of the planning commission. Thank you for your time. And I would have been at those meetings, but I was out of town at the time, my husband as well, so thanks for taking my comments.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Samuel Owens, who does wish to make a statement.
My name is Samuel Owens for the record. I have lived in northern Nevada for nearly 14 years, and I want to say I'm in favor of this project because of the recent economic activity that has come to this area with the increase in logistics companies that are relocating their businesses here. The Tahoe Reno Industrial Center is still increasing, and with any shipping and cargo that comes through the airport, there's going to be an increase in truck traffic. So I think this facility is needed for economical reasons to spread the capacity of the amount of truckers we can handle. And on top of that, there's essential Interstate 80, Highway 50, and Highway 395 that all connect through here, and the interstate travel, I can see that this facility is very essential, and I believe we need it for future growth, because I do not know the amount of traffic growth that's anticipated, but I'm hoping that it will already have been taken into consideration. But one other concern that I want to mention is that I'm hoping that the people who will work on this project for construction will be Nevada contractors, and that a lot of United States-based products will be bought, so that the money spent will actually remain in this area, and that the economic benefit will be at the most. So I want to thank the Reno Planning Commission for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ross Shaver, does wish to make a statement?
And that's just me. I can answer any questions or respond to some of these questions.
Gotcha. Next, we have Garrett Gordon, do you wish to make a statement? And Trey St. John?
Just here to, I'm one of the owners of Boomtown, and just to let you know, I can answer any questions, and we're here to stay and invest in the community, so.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Jim Middah, I believe, wishes to make a statement?
Thank you. That's Jim Middah.
All right. Thank you very much.
As we just discussed, my name is Jim Middah. I'm currently a resident of Alco County, and up until about 10 years ago, I was a lifelong resident of the Verdi area. I was also an employee of Boomtown for over 50 years. Predictably, I do support this truck stop proposal. With a very few exceptions, a truck stop at Boomtown, Bill and Effies, and even Ray and Effies, if you go back far enough... and Effies, if you go back far enough, predate the majority of the residences. Over the years, the various owners of the casino and the truck stop have been, have been very sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors and the public. Over the years, dozens and dozens of public meetings have been held to keep the public and the neighbors informed of Boomtown's plans. That's certainly true of the current effort. They've had their community outreach, and it's been very effective. One issue that I haven't heard discussed here tonight, but Cynthia Albright asked me if I had any opinions on it, and I certainly do, and that is that of groundwater quality and quantity. Apparently, at some of the community meetings they had, there was some concerns expressed by some of the people that having all those trucks and all that fuel up there, there could be some negative impacts through fuel leakage or spillages. And Boomtown has had a truck stop in various locations at Garson, formerly Hanson Road, since 1964. There have been underground storage facilities, and quite frankly, in the tanks installed in the late, in the early 60s, actually did start to leak. That was discovered under, as we were under construction on parts of the Boomtown Fund Center. Once it was discovered, we undertook a very serious, long-term mitigation program. That has since been closed by the Health Department, and the mitigation was effective. The point to be taken from that is that in 40 to 50 years of operation, there have been no impacts from fuel storage or fuel facilities on any domestic wells or any of Boomtown's commercial wells. So the problem was solved, and the, what we termed as a science fair project has long since been mitigated and closed. On the special use permit, a permit was issued with appropriate conditions several years ago, but economic conditions prevented the construction of the truck stop. The current truck stop ordinance was not intended to prevent or inhibit the construction of the Boomtown truck stop. The two were occurring at roughly the same time. The current truck stop ordinances, which is very restrictive, was intended to prevent the construction of a truck stop in the Robb Drive area, which is a very congested area and certainly not an appropriate place for a truck stop. That's why that was created, not because of the Boomtown truck stop.
Sir, you have 30 more seconds?
I'm sorry?
30 more seconds?
Okay. The letter of the current law does in fact prevent Boomtown from being rebuilt, but this commission exists to insert common sense into the planning process and to consider the history of the process. Were it not for very poor economic conditions, a truck stop, as previously approved, would exist there today. Neither this commission, nor Boomtown, nor the public, nor the neighbors are responsible for the economy, but both can be involved in restoring economic health to the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all the request to speak forums I do have. Does anybody else wish to come up and speak on this item? Okay, if not, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for questions. Who would like to start off? Commissioner Stapleton?
I have two sort of technical questions that, just to get us kicked off on this. One is a clarification from staff on the, your recommendation to deny the special use permit to enlarge, previously to enlarge the non-conforming use. I did study this a little bit and look at the code, and I'm not clear on your recommendation for denial on that one.
Vern Klos, senior planner. If you look at the non-conforming section of code, it allows a non-conforming use that's, or a use that's been discontinued, that was, and is now non-conforming, to be reestablished. So that's one of the special use permits being requested. The other one is a request to enlarge a non-conforming use. But if, you have to have the use established before you can enlarge it. If you look at the code, you can't enlarge something that's not established. If it wasn't previously established, you can't enlarge it. So, what we did is we combined these together, so if the commission determined, and the council determined, that the non-conforming use can be reestablished, that portion in the area that was established, then, based on your consideration of the findings, you could possibly enlarge that non-conforming use. But until the use is established, you can't enlarge it.
Okay, I understand.
That's the big, it's kind of a technical situation there.
Can I follow up with one question, Mr. Chair?
Of course.
Okay, that makes sense. So the, so the enlargement is contingent upon the reestablishment of the non-conforming use?
Yeah, if you get the piece reestablished here, then you can enlarge upon it.
Okay, that's how I read it. I was just making, I didn't realize that the denial was based on, your recommendation for denial was based on whether or not the other piece was approved by us.
Gets established, yes.
And then, just my second question, on, in terms of reestablishing the non-conforming use, I'm looking at the code, and it says, "A lawful use of non-conforming land or buildings, which are abandoned or discontinued, can be resumed with a special use permit." So that's what the applicant is trying to do, right?
Yes.
My question is, on this parcel, was there an actual use, or was it on a different par, and maybe this is a question?
There's a map in the staff report that shows the historic location.
So my question is, on this exact parcel, was there an actual use, or was there just an entitlement?
You don't have to answer that.
Yeah, maybe, it's okay if Cynthia answers, and then if Vern, if you could follow up?
That's, that's okay. That is the original truck stop site.
Okay.
And this is the portion.
Can you pull that down? Can you pull it down?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Where am I going here? The area in pink is where the truck stop originally was, and this is the area where they overlap.
With this parcel?
With, yeah, this is the parcel they wanna put it on, this is the historic location. This is the area where they can reestablish it, and then this area is where they could expand, expand it if the use is reestablished.
So the, there actually was an existing use before that was taken away?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
And on this photo, you can see the trucks and...
Yeah, okay, okay, I'm satisfied with that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably have a couple more questions, but I'll wait.
Commissioner Olivas, do you have any right now? Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Locke, Vern, can I, can I ask one more question? Or somebody who has the map that was just up there? Thank you. Okay, so, the historic, the parcel, can you tell me, this is kind of a confusing question, 'cause what you were saying before is that there's just such a small portion of the proposed development that was in the original parcel that was the truck stop, that little corner?
Yes.
So what is the original parcel, what is that now? Is that Cabela's? Or is that just empty space? Yeah.
This area, and here is Cabela's.
Okay.
So, so when the truck stop was removed, they came in and did the special use permit to do Cabela's, and they also, at that time, did the special use permit to relocate the truck stop. Then in 2007, they relocated the truck stop and the casino again, for, basically to the west side of where Cabela's is now. When that expired, that was approved before the truck stop ordinance was put in place, and then it expired after it was put in place. If that had not expired, they could've built the truck stop as it was approved in 2007, and arguably to a lesser standard than what they're proposing to do now, because they have met all the standards for the new truck stop ordinance, except for the spacing requirements.
Except for the, the distance?
Correct.
So, the, the part of the parcel that's the problem, the distance, is on the north side there? Is that correct? On Garson Road?
The, the whole parcel that they're proposing it on, and also the previous one, would not meet that distance requirement now. I mean, based on...
So it, it didn't, and now it still doesn't?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Coffin?
Okay, I have a question. Vern, probably you can answer this. We have the letter from the four property owners that agree to or approve this, that, you know, it doesn't bother them. How many property owners total is 1,320 feet from the property line?
There are three residences to the, let me get the map here. There are three residences to the northwest. One, two, three. This one...
You gotta pull it down.
Zoom out. No, that's okay. This residence is owned by the property owners, and I believe an employee of Boomtown lives there, and then these are the two private ones. There's also maybe one or two residences to the north, around 900 feet or so away, and they're 80 feet below grade, they can't even see the site, so, and there's no circulation from this project that would interact with those folks. So the, the only properties that are really affected residentially are those three properties, and one is owned by the applicant, and the rest are vacant.
Who, who wrote the letter that they would have no problem with this truck stop, correct?
These, these two folks agreed, from what I understand, it's Exhibit H in the staff report, that shows improvements that the applicant is proposing and willing to make to their property, and they indicated that they knew a truck stop had been there, or that, you know, the truck stops were there before, and if one's gonna go in, again, they had some operational issues that they wanted to address, screening through access, people just driving through their property because the road dead ends, those sorts of things. So these improvements address their issues, is, to the best of my knowledge.
But those residents really don't use that Garrison Road, do they?
Yes, they do.
Oh, they do? Okay.
They come in...
So that's why the electric gate?
Yeah, because the dead, road dead ends right here, and it just dead ends, there's no turnaround, there's no signage, and people would drive up there, and then they would just go, oh, here's their road, and they'd just keep driving right onto their property. So, these should greatly minimize, if not eliminate, that sort of traffic.
I also have a question, I guess for Cynthia or Gordon, one of you.
I'll take a stab first.
We heard Jim talk about that they had the tanks leaking at one time, and Boomtown took care of that, and, but now, you know, are there, that's kind of a earthquake-prone area, I guess? So, are there some type of standards that are set that monitors that, so that same thing today doesn't, and I, you know, okay.
I'm gonna let Ross answer that.
Sure. Okay, for the record, Ross Shaver, project manager, Flying J, 5508, Loness Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37909. So, as you can imagine, technology has come a long ways in the past 50 years. So, of course, we have to meet all federal, state, local EPA regulations. So now, the federal EPA regulation is making you do what's called a double-walled tank. So you have a, of course, you have a tank, and then you have an outer tank around that. So essentially, all your fuel is sitting in that inner tank. Around that tank, you have all these mechanical sensors. So as soon as a leak occurs, and it goes into the next tank, it hits one of those sensors and shuts off all the fuel. Not only that, we have a company that's based out of Connecticut. Every fuel transaction that happens, it checks the tank versus how, how much, how many gallons of diesel, whatever fuel, was pumped out of the tank, and it compares that to how much went out the dispenser, and if they don't equal, it automatically shuts down. So it happens at every fuel transaction, and every 15 minutes maximum. I operate 650 facilities across North America, and if I was having fuel leaks every day, I'd be out of business. It, I mean, it just doesn't happen.
Okay, I bet the question was part for information for us.
Sure, sure.
'Cause all we do is put the hose in the tank.
That's right. Believe me, there's a lot that goes in to Travel Center.
Okay. Daniel? Yeah?
Sure.
Yep. For the record, Charlene Albee, Air Quality Management, just to also add on to the, the description of the tanks, the Health Department, Environmental Health Services, and Air Quality Management also have permits to operate on the tanks. We actually have permits on the existing tanks that are out there right now. They are required to do annual leak tests on the, not only the lines that are dispensing the fuel, but also on the vapor recovery lines, so that when the vapors are recovered at the car being fueled, when you put your nozzle in, if it takes it back and puts it in the tank, if there's any condensation in those vapor lines, those are also tested and monitored, and we do get those reports on an annual basis, and they are reviewed by staff, and enforcement officers go out and do, Air Quality does biannual inspections.
Okay, don't run off, Charlene, 'cause the next question's for you. Let's see, Daniel?
In a way.
Yeah, sent this letter out about, and, and you talked about going from 50 percent to 25. So, but also in this letter, it's recommending something about a three-year program of improvement down the road. I mean, is that out too, or, you know?
Well, we, we started with the 50 percent. That was a number that was selected by planning. They thought that would be a good number, recognizing that there is a financial investment to put that in. They were suggesting an alternative to constructing everything right now, to have a phase-in over a three-year period to get to the 50 percent. Since it's not technically feasible to put 50 percent in there, we acknowledge that we're happy to get the 25 percent, because none of our other truck stops have any. So we are already 25 percent ahead of where we normally are. It's our understanding that's gonna be constructed all at one time.
Okay, now...
And so that takes care of the phase-in portion.
Okay. So, how, kinda in layman's terms, I guess, how does that, you know, is, well, first of all, is there 27 spots? How many?
Yes, there are. There are 27 spots on the master plan. You can see there are the ones that are at the angle on the very west end of the property.
Okay, so how does that work? I mean, you know, I don't, in other words, you gotta get in layman's terms.
Right. Well, the technology that we're currently moving forward with, there's much more background on this, maybe I should shed some light on that, too, so...
Read or digest version.
What we're proposing is what's called Idle Air Technology, and that's a company called Idle Air. They're actually based out of Knoxville, Tennessee, where I'm from. What they do is they build a structure over these parking stalls, and they have a hose that comes down and ties into the truck, that has heating and air, communications, let's see, yeah, TV, internet, thank you. So really, everything that a truck driver would be using if he was sitting there idling. But that comes with a cost. I mean, not so much to me, it comes to a cost to the trucking company, to the driver. So what we're seeing is, because of course the trucking companies don't wanna take, absorb this cost, we're seeing a push in the trucks themselves, have additional batteries, have another form of energy, where instead of idling, they're using that other form of energy to run these same things. So this technology is really being phased out. And to really give you the logical behind that, this company... behind that, this company went bankrupt and went under just two years ago, and now they've been able to come back. It's all, it's pretty much government-based money, because it's just not an economically feasible thing, because there's not enough truckers doing it. I mean, you can have the fifteen percent requirement, and that, and we're gonna provide it. But whether fifteen percent of truckers really do or not, the technology's changing, and there's costs associated with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what you're telling us right now is that there's a request of you to provide twenty-five percent-
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent reduction in idling. Our air quality management would like to see fifty percent, and yet, nobody uses it.
Well, okay.
So, why, so, what's the difference between fifteen and fifty, when your answer a few minutes ago was zero?
Well, I'm not, I'm not quite following you on the zero.
You're saying that the truckers, the technology, isn't in the trucks for them to hook up, because so many trucks are, don't have this new technology, a new way to hook up and and operate?
Well, because there's a cost associated with it. So, I mean, these truckers, these trucking companies don't wanna pay for it. In all reality, this idle air technology, other businesses, I allow them to come on any site I build. I'm building twenty-five sites right now. As she confirmed, this is the only one.
Okay.
I I mean, it's just not a good business. I can put it out there. I'm more than willing to put it out there. I'm going to do that. Who all uses it? That's up to them.
Okay.
And the way it works is, it's an amenity to me. I'm not making any money off of it. So, idle air is making the money. It's just hopefully another attraction. Is that-
I understand exactly what you're saying. Thank you. Charlene?
Just just as a clarification, this idle air is really a bridge technology for trucking right now. Up until now, the only option the trucks had was to sit there and idle, and they run their heater, they run their air conditioner. That's that's what they do. With the idle air technology, they can sit and park and turn their engines off, have this hose actually comes in and hooks into the truck. It's got a little TV screen on it, you know, it's got internet capability. They can hook in their laptop. To sit and idle a truck, it's about four, it's about a gallon of diesel fuel an hour. It's four dollars a gallon. Idle air costs about two dollars an hour to hook up. So, they are exchanging a cost. They are getting a reduced cost. There's reduced wear and tear on the vehicle. Technology realizes that the installation of these idle air facilities is expensive. It takes a lot of space. It's not the perfect answer. So, the engine manufacturers, the truck manufacturers are already on board designing the new trucks as of like 2010, I believe, 2011, 12, that they can actually have an electrical plug-in, so they can pull up to a spot and just plug an electrical cord in, which is going to run a motor that will provide the same air conditioning, heating, all of that, without having to idle the truck. So, we know the technology is here. It's close. It's going to be available in the future, you know, probably within the next five or ten years, you'll start seeing this available. So, idle air is a bridge. It's a bridge so that we can still get an air quality reduction. We get a fuel savings, and there's a benefit that's afforded if people will take advantage of it. It's not mandatory, but without idle air, we get no reduction in emissions. At least with it there, we have a potential-
I understand what your explanation is, but I wanna get back to what my question is. And where I'm, you know, one, do we have an ordinance in the county that requires idling or no idling? And because I know in the past, with some of the warehousing that's gone in, it's been a condition that there's been no idling of vehicles during loading and unloading. So, is there an ordinance that specifies fifteen percent reduction, or twenty-five percent reduction, or fifty percent reduction?
From what I understand, it's a city of Reno planning ordinance that was a fifteen percent reduction.
Okay.
This idle air is-
Then I'll ask staff about that in a minute.
Is twenty-five percent. That's, you know, as far as I learned. I learned that today. I didn't even know it was out there. As far as the idling goes, the air quality regulations do limit it to fifteen minutes of idling.
Okay. So, when the freeway, the I-80 West gets shut down in the wintertime, and truckers are stopped, they're allowed to run for fifteen minutes, and then they have to shut down anyways, right?
That's what they're supposed to do. And we have, as you could imagine, a very difficult time enforcing that. It becomes a significant safety issue for everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Vern, I've got a question for you. That's okay. I'm-
Okay.
I'm good. Vern, do we have an ordinance of fifteen percent reduction, idle reduction?
In the truck stop, Vern, close in your planner, in the truck stop Travel Plaza, fifteen K, compliance with diesel idling regulations? Answer is yes. You want me to read it, or?
No, I mean, I just, I didn't know that we, there was a section. I was, what I was trying to decipher is if it was a condition that was being put onto this project, or if it's an actual ordinance that we have for all of our proposed truck stops or active truck stops.
If they had not proposed it, it would be, well, it's code, conditioned code, it's essentially the same thing. But it says fifty, minimum fifteen percent of truck spaces must be equipped with approved engine idle reduction, or similar plug-in, approved plug-in device to, you know, for trucks with sleepers and or refrigeration to avoid idling engines, engines.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Cynthia, I have a question for you, please. In your, I just went brain-dead, I'm sorry. In your introduction, and and all the the different pages you were showing us as you were flipping through it, you had one that was titled Community Outreach Efforts slide.
Yes.
That was the name of the slide?
Yes. I have it.
And it it shows two different housing groups-
Do you wanna go back to the slide or put this-
To the west. Community Outreach Efforts was the title?
Yes, I have the slide. I don't know why it's not, oh, never mind. Excuse me. Bup, bup, bup. Yep, got it.
There you go.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay. We've we've pretty much discussed the the small ranch residential area to the northwest. We know that's within thirteen hundred and twenty feet. The house, the next gold area that you showed to the west of residential area, are the, is that area outside the thirteen hundred and twenty square feet, or twenty lineal feet?
Yes. For the record, Cynthia Albright, Stantec Consulting. If you wanna know where thirteen hundred and twenty feet actually exists from the edge of this parcel, it would be to the very end of the two residential parcels, the far back parcel property line on one of those residential parcels, the furthest to the west. So, thirteen hundred and twenty feet actually is to the very end of their parcel at the very back. To answer your question, none of these surrounding parcels are within thirteen hundred and twenty feet. That is within a half-mile radius of the property.
Okay. All right. Great. It, in our staff report, and I believe you, and I meant to mark down the page that you were on, and I didn't, the adjacent, the the black line that we see on on the photograph, aerial photo right before us now-
Yes.
Is that the current property line for the truck stop? Where is the property line for the truck stop? And if you have a different aerial or diagram you'd like to share, please do.
Okay, so you're asking for the property line. Do you wanna put that back up?
Doesn't, yeah, I would like to see property line.
Michelle's bringing it back up. So, if we go back, this parcel, this map, I think, kinda shows you. So, Vern's mapping is a little bit different, but what Vern's mapping shows is the sort of outline of all of the pavement, if you see, within that red boundary. That red boundary are the two parcels that were comprised as the original truck stop.
Okay, but what my question is is-
Is the parcel to the west, that's configured like a trapezoid, if you will, that is this parcel, okay? And the parcel to the east is the Cabela's parcel.
Okay, so, so this proposed truck stop is going to be on two different parcels?
No.
Or are you eliminating?
This proposed truck stop is going within the same parcel it was always intended to go.
Okay.
And what I've shown here in the yellow line is that's the proposed development area. So, we're not taking, we're not gonna build this truck stop on the entire parcel. We're only gonna build it within that footprint of that yellow boundary.
Okay. So, what is the current zoning for the rest of the area within the black, and also the area within the white trapezoid?
Everything is zoned hotel commercial. All of it.
Okay. And west of the trapezoid, that is not part of this property. Is that zoned residential, or is that also HC?
That's AC.
That's AC?
Yes.
So, so even outside the property line for future developments, there is no other residential within thirteen hundred and twenty feet?
There is residential zoning to the west of the AC at the very end of Boomtown-Garson Road.
Right.
So, if you were gonna look at a zoning map, you would see low-density suburban residential zoning out there to the west, and you would see industrial to the north.
Okay.
But we are an island of HC. Yes. It's, and the low-density suburban residential to the west is actually owned by this property owner.
Okay.
Thank you.
'Cause see, what I'm looking at, what Vern is showing is west of AC, is single-family-
Their property where they're developing, trying to talk to the microphone-
Please.
Basically runs parallel to this line right here.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we measured the residential distance from, because they're gonna parcel this off, and there's no truck stop basically west of that line. So, the thirteen hundred and twenty-foot distance was measured approximately from that point.
Okay. So, Vern, I'm glad you're standing there, because that, thank you, Cynthia, that was gonna lead into my next question. There is an area west of what was just discussed as the yellow line of the build-out for this truck stop. And then there was still a small swath of of undeveloped dirt in the HC and the AC zone. If that truck stop were to expand to the west, would that encroach into any other residential zone property, or is that an issue that we should be looking at?
Are you referring to this area right here?
Yes, and from their west.
Their western boundaries approximately there. This is HC, this is AC, and then approximately three hundred and eighty-five feet from here to here is where the SF-6 residentially zoned property starts. So, if they expanded to the west, from what they're proposing do, they would be moving closer to residentially zoned property, which is currently vacant.
Okay. Now, would that fall under this historically approved zoning? I mean, you know, no? So, it would be a separate, it would be a typical SUP or variance that they would come in and ask for additional-
It would be-
To expand it.
It'd be essentially what they're doing here, expand the non-conforming use in a variance to reduce whatever standards they can't meet, which most likely would be the, or which would be the thirteen hundred and twenty-foot-
Okay.
Distance.
All right. That makes sense to me. Thank you. I have, Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for Vern.
Commissioner Coffin?
Since you're up there, thank you. Part of your explanation, too, and I guess I'm, is they can't expand the use because the the use is not existing today, right? That part of the reason for-
The portion that they want, they, first, they wanna reestablish the non-conforming use, then they want to expand it. In order to expand it, you have to have one established. So, they're trying to reestablish it on that southeast corner of the site on the map that we, that area right there. And if that gets approved, then they have a non-conforming use upon which they can expand. I think that's the distinction.
Yeah, kinda. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions. I guess for either Vern or the applicant. Are are they agreeing to all the conditions that have been put on this in the staff report?
Cynthia Albright for the applicant? Yes, of course.
Okay. And then a question for Vern? Thanks, Cynthia. Okay, so, in terms of what we're asked, what they're asking for the variance for, this is for the adjacency to residential that in the in the truck stop code that is currently, it has to be further than thirteen hundred square feet? Am I correct?
The variance is to reduce the thirteen hundred and twenty-foot separation distance from the edge of the property to the nearest residentially zoned property.
Because code requires that to be thirteen hundred square feet, but the project only has it at, is it eight hundred?
To the nearest is around two fifty to the-
Oh, two fifty?
That's the-
Okay.
The property that, essentially, all the property except for these two parcels is owned by the applicant. So, they have control of this SF-6 property, this LLR property, this property here, and the IC property to the north. It's all owned by the applicant, and it's all vacant, except for that one house.
Okay. But that's why we need the variance, because in the truck stop ordinance, it requires a distance of thirteen hundred.
Correct. Thirteen hundred, yes.
And so, what is, so that sounds like an ordinance that was more recently developed. So, can you talk about the origin of that, and why, why, sort of what the impetus behind that was, and what the community, or, you know, or the planning commission at that point indicated that they wanted?
That ordinance was developed around 2008. It was the result of a application to put a truck stop at the Robb Drive interchange on the south side of I-80 and Robb Drive, just west-east of that TCA site, which you all reviewed a couple years ago. And that piece was owned by Flying J. The ordinance, in fact, was developed in conjunction with Flying J, but it was largely based on the resistance and concerns expressed by people in the Robb Drive area north of the freeway, not wanting a truck stop at that location. And as a result of that process, these were the standards that were put into ordinance. And one of them was that quarter-mile separation.
So, the ordinance that these guys are asking for a variance from was developed in partnership with them? Is that the history here?
It was the previous representatives of Flying J.
It was still Flying J, though?
Well, we didn't purchase Flying J until 2010.
Okay, well-
So, they were a separate entity. As you can imagine, from a business standpoint, if you can get in here, get your business established, and then create more ordinances where nobody else can come in, then essentially you've created a monopoly.
So, you're saying that-
So, what Flying J did was they tried to get their business in, and then also stop any other travel centers from coming in to this area.
Actually, if I could jump in there, that's not correct. Flying J was denied. And then, after they were denied, then we worked on the ordinance with the Flying J representatives to develop where it would be appropriate within the city of Reno, not using Robb Drive. We we knew when it was denied, Robb Drive, that wasn't where we wanted it. And so, at that time, council directed us to write an ordinance looking citywide, where the appropriate locations would be. The representatives of Flying J at that time, I guess the company formerly known as Flying J, helped us to write that ordinance. So, it wasn't to create a monopoly. It was to find that location that the city felt was appropriate. And they helped us with some wording that they had helped, worked on in other cities around the country. And the thirteen hundred and twenty came from, that's your average walking distance. That's also the distance that we use in the Todd corridors, that that's where the basic distance where someone's gonna walk to services, where they're gonna walk to, where kids might walk, I think, was the main concern, to go to a convenience store or something to get a pack of gum, or whatever it is. And so, thirteen hundred and twenty was used as the typical walking distance that somebody would go, and they wanted to keep it further than that from residential district, to to limit pedestrian traffic from a residential area to the truck stop.
Okay. So, I understand it wasn't you guys personally, but it was still the company that you bought that supported this ordinance. And this ordinance, I mean, but, and this ordinance is based on, did you say it was based on standards that were developed, were seen in other communities across the country?
Yes, they brought us a number of examples of, I wanna say there was one in Colorado, and a couple other cities that they brought forward. And most of most of that ordinance, they brought the wording to to us. Of course, we tweaked it. We brought it to the neighborhood advisory boards, and some things were changed, but they brought us the- But they brought us the, the basic outline of the ordinance.
Okay, I know, I know it's not you personally, it does kind of put you in a funny position. I have one more question about the variance. In looking at the findings to make the variance to allow you guys to have a significantly less than thirteen twenty distance from residential, there's two findings that we're required to make. Finding, finding one A, this is on page seventeen of the staff report, that the property has to be characterized by, I guess Garrett's going to answer this question, but let me finish. The property is characterized by an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition, basically a physical hardship. So for us to be able to make the findings, I want to know how, what is the physical hardship of this site? It looks like a pretty flat, nice site, there's no exceptional topographic condition. So if you can tell me about that. And then also, second part of the question regarding the variance, if, if you want to go ahead, I can ask that after.
Thank you for the question. For the record, Garrett Gordon, so finding one, I, I would argue it does not say physical hardship. It says, "The property is characterized by an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition, comma, such as," and provide some examples. So my response would be, I think it certainly is an exceptional situation where we have the ability to bring back two grandfathered uses and really bypass or avoid the primary use, right? The primary use requirement for a truck stop is it's not allowed in HC. But we're allowed to bring back a truck stop and avoid the primary use zoning regulations in HC zone. We're allowed, as defined, you cannot put non-restricted gaming as a primary use without the two hundred rooms. We're allowed to go back in time, bring that primary use into effect now. So, and thirdly, a truck stop is the primary use and it has standards, these minimum standards. So I think it's certainly exceptional and extraordinary that we don't have to comply with the primary use zoning requirements, but we now have to comply with standards related to that use. So I would say it has nothing to do with the physical characteristics, except for the one standard we're asking to be avoided is a physical standard. It's a physical impossibility. We cannot comply with thirteen hundred and twenty feet. We didn't before, and we can't now. The ones we can comply with, we've agreed to do so.
Okay, I, I, it's not your physical hardship, it's an actual physical hardship of the site. And it does say the situation or condition, i.e. all those examples are physical examples. So I would disagree with your interpretation, although I do understand there are some hardships for you. But I do not think that those hardships that you just stated are within the realm of a situation or condition such as, and all the such as's examples are physical. So I want to ask you about the third part of this, the findings for the variance that we're required to make in order to improve this variance. The fact that the existing use is expanded in a manner which does not conform with the title is not to be used as a basis for the granting of a variance. And that's sort of what's happening here unless you have a different argument.
Will you read that again for me, please?
The third section, the third finding on the variance, it says that the fact that, that a building exists or is expanding in a manner which doesn't conform with the title, with the code, can't be used as a basis for the granting of the variance. So the fact that you guys can't conform with this isn't something, you know, which was your, you know, your, your argument before this regarding the hardship, can't be used as the basis for granting the variance.
Well, I think for the record, Garrett Gordon, when you read the variance in conjunction with non-conforming use law, right? We're a grandfathered, we're bringing back a grandfathered use, right? And in the definitions of non-conformities, it talks about code or ordinances passed, right? Outside your control, which thereby makes you grandfathered. So I don't say we're, we're, the, the truck stop was demoed, correct? And the ordinance came into effect after that point in time. We have the ability, under non-conformity law, to go back in time and reestablish two grandfathered uses. We don't have to comply with zoning code, we don't have to comply with, with roofs. So I would say that, that we have not caused our own hardship or our own issue by virtue of these truck stop standards that were enacted that, at, after the building has been demoed.
Okay, can I just have one more follow-up question? And this is, thanks Garrett, I just have a question for staff about that. So, or maybe legal, in terms of the interpretation of this. His argument is that because the, the title was, has changed, that maybe in this case, that, that it is grandfathered in and that the current, the, the current title that exists upon which we can't use, you know, the fact that it's not in compliance with that, we can't use as the basis for granting of the variance. He's arguing that because the, the title was different when this was a non-conforming use, or the code was different, that that should be grandfathered in. I don't know if legal can give us an opinion, or staff, what's your opinion on that? That sounds to me like, it's, I mean, it's a, I know Garrett's really good at these legal arguments, but I, I want an opinion on that if someone has it, thanks.
Vern Close, my, my, do you want to do it? My kind of quick reading in this is based on, I built a building without a permit and it was constructed incorrectly. And then I'm coming in to ask for a variance to make it legal. That's kind of what I'm reading this as versus I have a non-conforming use that I'm trying to reestablish. And they're just requesting a variance to reduce that. So they didn't have something, I mean, it, it didn't physically meet the requirement before the, you know, with the pre-existing situation right here. And it doesn't now, so they're asking for a variance to reduce that. This, I think, is more related on somebody did something wrong and then they tried, they're trying to correct it with a variance. And I don't think that's applicable to this case.
And if I can further expand on that, I think just to go back a little bit to look at the actual requests that we have, that you have before you, may help a little bit. So there was a truck stop there and there was a hotel use, or casino use there. That was in this orange area here. They are now proposing to reestablish, or to establish the use here. The only area in common is this area right here. That's the, that little square is where we used to have a truck stop and casino use. So special use permit number one is to reestablish the use in that little square. Because that's the only place you can reestablish it, because it wasn't in the rest of it. So that's, that's condition, or the special use permit number one. Special use permit number two is to expand that use, the same section of code, one section, one portion down. So that, this one was to reestablish, the next one is to expand a non-conforming use. So the expansion of non-conforming use brings it out to this larger area here. So that's special use permit number two. With the expansion, reestablishing it doesn't, I would agree with Garrett, that it, that does not trigger the thirteen twenty. Because you're bringing it back to where it was, you're reestablishing, that's not going to trigger the thirteen twenty. The expansion over to this area, because this fell under that, the old ordinance, before the thirteen twenty was in place. When you expand it over into this area, that's a new use in a new area. It's an expansion, so that comes in under the new ordinance. The new ordinance is where that thirteen twenty comes into place. So the thirteen twenty variance is only associated with the expansion of the use, not with that original special use permit to reestablish. Does that help?
That does, sorry, last question, that does help and, but, but still, staff finds that for that new use, which makes sense then on what we were talking about on the third section of the variance. But in terms of you guys not being able to make the findings for the variance, I understand all the rest of them on the SUPs. Do you guys read that, that the extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition can be other than physical? For that, in terms of what the hardship is and in terms of maybe what your guys' determination was in terms of not being able to make the findings for the variance?
I don't see that it cannot be physical in this situation.
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to think of a situation where it could be, and I can't, I can't think of one.
Okay, thanks.
Which is why we, we're recommending denial on that.
Commissioner Locke, I have a question, Claudia. Isn't the undue hardship physical in that Cabela's is there now? I mean, what, I just, I'm confused. They've complied with everything else, so what would it look like if they complied? Like, what, what would it look like if they were, if they weren't compliant? It wouldn't even be in existence?
It would be somewhere else.
Okay.
Commissioner Olivas, Commissioner Olivas, I guess I have a question. Is this, the special use permit and the variance, are they only going to apply to the portion that's hashed out there for the expansion? Or will it apply to the rest of that parcel? And what, and I guess where I'm going is what would it take for them to further expand onto the rest of their parcel?
Vern Close, senior planner, the area in black that's crosshatched is the area where the project is. So if they wanted to expand out of that area, if the requests were approved, then they would have to go through an SUP at minimum to expand a non, further expand the non-conforming use. And then also a variance to reduce the spacing from residential to less than thirteen hundred and twenty feet.
Okay, that, that answers it. I was curious how the neighbors would be, would feel about that further expansion, because they're supportive of it as it is right now.
Well, again, that would be determined at such time as they apply for that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Claudia, and Vern, it doesn't really matter, because we, all three were here when Cabela's went in, when they brought the plans before us. And there was discussion of relocation of the truck stop.
Yes, yes.
They had a plan that came before us, that where did that truck stop? When we approved the SUP for Cabela's? Where was that truck stop located at that time?
It was, I believe, approved adjacent to the west side of Cabela's. But because, they had a special use permit approved, but they, they had a special use permit approved, but they did not perfect it. In other words, they did not, they did not establish the use. The SUP expired. So once it, if they've never established the use, you have no non-conforming use to expand. And that's kind of,
No, I understand that part. But, but I don't think, you know, for some of us that were here before, you know, and some of the new members, you know, that was kind of their, their original plan. And I understand the economics, you know, of, of not being able to build it and, you know, all that. But that's, I just wanted, you know, to refresh my memory too, that that truck stop, you know, was going on the west of Cabela's, in the same area, correct?
Correct, the black hat hatched area. Another element that staff considers with their review is that they did have that special use permit approved for that area. It expired and council adopted a new ordinance directing us where they want truck stops. After the, before or after the expiration, either way, doesn't really matter. They had an ordinance adopted, they adopted an ordinance directing us where they wanted those to go. So once that special instrument goes away, any new application, we have to consider it under that new ordinance, which is direction from council.
Okay.
Commissioner Locke, I just want to make a statement. You know, I mean, I drove out there, I saw all the trucks parked along the freeway, scattered here, scattered there. You know, I'm listening to the community and I see the code and I understand the code. But I also, and I respect the code, but I also respect the common sense of the situation. Okay, like, you, we need a truck stop out there. If anybody's driven out there, I mean, it's, it's safety concerns by residents. You know, there's no place for these people to go. I, I don't see anything wrong, just commonsensically with something like this going in. And when, when we start to get caught up on a technicality and, and we, and we don't see the common sense of it, I mean, to me, I think that there has to be a way for a project like this where they're bending over backwards to make it nice, do everything they can. I, I mean, there has to be a way for us to come to some sort of resolution, right? I mean, I don't know, that's just coming from somebody who lives in Reno and who really cares about the way it looks. And, I mean, just having something for the community, for the truckers to be in one spot. This was something that was agreed upon before, you know, I mean, I can't argue with the code, but I'll just say from, you know, my perspective, you know, it sure looks good to me.
Before we continue, do, does anybody have any questions of the applicant or staff? Mr. Chairman, Vern, one more. I'm just going to ask you to restate something for me, please. You just made a comment that the previous SUP that was approved by planning commission in 2007 was in the majority of that black hatched areas where the truck stop was going to go. Is, is that correct?
Essentially in the same area, yes.
And, and for whatever reason, good business, bad business decisions, whatever, that SUP was let to expire?
That's correct.
If that had not expired, would the applicant still be here before us today because of the change in the distance between residences? Or would they be grandfathered in at the older distance between?
As long as the SUP is valid, they can construct it as it was approved. It goes with the property as long as it's valid.
Okay, okay, thank you very much for restating that.
Welcome.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? I believe all my questions have been answered. Thank you commissioners. We'll move it back to us for comments or concerns. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I'll start with comments. And I just want to say, I do hear what Commissioner Locke is saying. And I think that I can make the findings for the SUPs. And I see how that conforms with what's written in the code in terms of bringing back non-conforming uses and things like that. I do have an issue with the variance and I think that, you know, it is technically the, the physical hardship. You know, it's not how close the, the, the building is on the next property. It's, you know, a physical hardship on the site, like, you know, a slope or, you know, some sort of physical characteristics of the site around which it really would be impossible to meet the, the code. And, you know, unfortunately, this new code was put in place. And it was put in place, though I know it's not specifically, you know, these guys, you know, imparted by your company and what you guys wanted. And based on what sounds like some pretty sensible standards that are in place in other parts of the country. And in terms of the variance request, you know, it's not, you know, from thirteen twenty down to one thousand or nine hundred, it's down to like two hundred and fifty square feet. So that, or, you know, linear feet, but that, to me, is a pretty, you know, gross difference from what the standard is in code. So, you know, I, I don't know what to do because, you know, we have to make these findings. And I really, you know, the hardship can't be that it can't pencil like this, you know? Or that the site is just too small. That's, you know, the hardship has to be that, you know, it's some, you know, physical barrier, you know, or physical characteristic of the site, and I just don't think that's real. And so, you know, unfortunately, that's the findings that we have to make. And I just can't make that, especially, you know, to this extent, from thirteen twenty down to two fifty on a, on a code that was put in place by the community and, you know, by the business community and other truck stop owners. So that's where I'm at on that, but I could make the findings on the rest of it.
Other comments or concerns?
Other comments or concerns? Commissioner Kaufman?
Okay, I'll talk about the variance. I can make the findings for the variance based upon the distance who affects the residents, those residents being in support of the project and being less than the 1,320 feet. If the residents would have been against that, I would say no way. But partly because the SUP, you know, and I know it expired, but I think you still have to take a look at, they would have been able to build that proj- project, even if they'd just put a small building on, you know, then we wouldn't, part of it wouldn't be part of this discussion. And I understand why the ordinance came and where the, the, I guess, the pressure of that ordinance came from to start with. But again, when you have the support of the residents to support the project within, so I can make the findings.
Commissioner Locke?
Commissioner Locke, I just would like to agree with Commissioner Kaufman.
Commissioner Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem making the findings for the special use permit. I, I didn't, I did have a problem with the variance until discussion this evening. And, and much like Commissioner Kaufman, because we have support of the neighborhood, and I sat in on, on the previous location off of Rob Drive, I was a planning commissioner, young planning commissioner at the time when that came through. And I, I remember sitting here with a packed house of people that were within that distance saying, "No, no." And I remember city council sending a directive back and that's where the 1,320 millennial feet came from, of clearance. I've been out there several times. Matter of fact, I worked last fall with a different group who had a different idea for development on that property when it was available and for sale. And there were, were immediate thoughts of changing the, the SFC zoning to the west to IC or, or to something else so that it would be more compatible with the neighborhoods that sit to the west. But, but because of the actions of the property owner, whether or not they made a good business decision a few years ago to let this SUP expire, they're making good business decisions and good neighborhood decisions today to work with the owners and condition themselves to be good neighbors and to protect the neighbors' interests. And because of that, that's why you asked for a variance. That's why certain aspects of hardship are determined. The variance is, the findings are written the way they are. I believe the applicant has, has succeeded and you will have my support in making a recommendation for approval to council.
Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, I, I think I concur with most all that discussion and I guess I, I can agree with the finding on the variance and not being as much of an expert, I, I, the literal reading of this, I don't see the, the, the physical characteristics being as the all be-all end-all of a situation or condition. And so I think that I can find that that's, that this is a exceptional situation or condition, given the rest of the facts and circumstances surrounding all this.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll conclude this conversation with, with my thoughts. I, I echo a lot of the opinions of my fellow commissioners. I, I really, I could make the findings for the SUP, but I was really having a hard time with the hardship for the variance and, and the distance, even though we're not even close to it, I mean, it was, I can understand the argument on both sides, why, why we would, recommendation for denial versus showing the hardship for approval. I do believe that this comes down to the residents in the area and the fact that, that there was so much work done with the residents in the area, especially the, the two immediately adjacent and that they are in agreeance with this moving forward, I can support this going forward. So with that-
Mr. Chairman, before you ask for a motion or a vote, I would just like to compliment our staff on, on this project. It wasn't easy. We, we received information in the form of a three-inch binder with nearly 400 pages of information from the applicant. And staff holding their ground and making a recommendation for denial. I compliment you on that and, and think that you, you know, guys were doing the right thing for what your job is and when it comes before us as planning commission, for us to look at things a little bit differently and to take another consideration into it that may be knowing that you can't do. And that's the difference this evening in, at least my opinion, and I believe a few other commissioners the same way, but you guys did a, a great job on a difficult project.
Thank you for your comment and I completely agree with that. This is, this is a tough one. With that, I'd like to call for a motion. And we will have to split these in two.
Yes, if I can make a recommendation, please split them actually into three. You've got, I'm sorry, into five motions. We've got five requests in front of you. And those are going to be recommendations to city council. And if you could please address the findings as you make the motion, a little bit beyond, I can make the findings. If you could actually address them and how they can actually be made, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, do I have a motion? Anybody would like to attempt to make the first motion?
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton, in the case number LDC 13-00049, in regards to the special use permit 1A to reestablish and enlarge a previously existing non-conforming truck stop in the HC Hotel Casino Zone, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, and I can make the findings for the SUP permit, I move to approve the special use permit to, as I just said, reestablish and enlarge a previously existing non-conforming truck stop in HC Hotel Casino Zone.
Commissioner Wieski, I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Please let the record show, the motion passed seven to zero. Can we have? Six to zero, thank you. We are down one commissioner. Onto the next motion, please.
I'll make the next motion unless anybody else wants to.
Please do so.
Okay. In the case of LDC 13-00049, I moved in regards to request 1B, special use permit to reestablish a previously existing non-conforming non-restricted gaming operation without hotel rooms in the HC zone. I can make the findings.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Please let the record show, the motion passed six to zero. Onto the next motion.
Commissioner Locke, I'll give it a try. In the case of LDC 13-00049, 1C, I move to recommend city council allow a non-residential development adjacent to residentially zoned property. And I can make the findings. Do you want me to list?
Can you please?
That would be great, thank you.
All the findings?
Or at least touch on the key ones, please.
Okay. Let's go to the findings. Okay, specifically-
Thank you.
Specifically F, which we talked about pollution. And, let's see, I'm waiting for the other findings. Oh, you have them right here. Right here. Uh, so F and E, specifically.
Can you please explain what E was?
Oh, and E is the proposed site location and scale, intensity, density, height, layout, setbacks, and architectural and overall design of the development and the uses proposed is appropriate to the area, specifically site location and scale.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieski, I'll second that motion and I can, standing, uh, excuse me, findings A, D, E, and F were the most specific findings for me to make, although I could make all of the findings.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
I'm sorry, it was a yea vote, not a nay vote.
Let the record show, the motion passed six to zero. And we have one more motion, I believe. Would you like to take a stab at the next one?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 13-00049, Boomtown Casino Travel Plaza reestablishment, make recommendation to city council to approve special use permit request D to allow the uses to operate between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM 24 hours a day. And again, I can make all of the findings, but specifically A, D, E, and F. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I second the motion. I can make the findings.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Please let the record show, the motion passed six to zero. Our last motion.
And on the variance, if you could go into a little more detail about how you can make the findings, I'd appreciate it.
Do I have a motion on the variance? Commissioner Stapleton? Please, someone try to give it. There a motion out there?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Kaufman?
Maybe. In the case of LDC 13-00049, Boomtown Casino Travel Plaza, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit.
Variants and a recommendation.
Oh. I'm sorry. This is on the variance. Am I on the wrong one? Oh. Okay. A variance to reduce the minimum separation is, is that right? District required between a truck stop and residentially zoned property to less than the required 1,320 feet? I can make all the findings A, B, C, and D.
Please go in a little more detail with your findings.
I can make the findings that characterize, rise because of the, the size of the, the lot. I understand that the exception is less than 1,320, but because of the compliance of the neighbors, I could make that again, B. I think that's a hardship with what, the property that they have. And I think that that was the consistent with the intent of that land originally when it was proved, even though the SUP expired.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Olivas, I'll second. And I can make the findings, specifically A, that this is characterized by an extraordinary exceptional situation and condition for all of the reasons not specific to the geography, but the, all of the history of the property and its location and the requirements put on it.
Thank you.
Can we have discussion on the motion, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Stapleton, I'll be voting, voting no on this motion, just to put on the record because I cannot make the finding 1A of the variance. I don't believe the property is characterized by an extraordinary exceptional situation or condition such as the physical characteristics described in that, in that section of code.
Any more discussion? All right, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Let the record show, the motion passed five to one. Good luck with your project. Thank you very much for the staff and applicants. Can we have a 10-minute recess, please?
Before you do that, could you read the appeal process, please?
Thank you, Vern. Any action taken by the planning commission on intended map, special use permit, variance, or skyway is final unless appealed. Any person agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person entity must take his or her its own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be afforded to the city council with the planning commission recommendation. All right, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Thank you. To order. Next case number is TXT 13-00010, flood hazard areas and FEMA compliance. May I have staff, please? Thank you.
Good evening and once again, I'm Carrie Lonzo at the City of Reno. And tonight before you is a text amendment. This follows a recent FEMA audit and so is requesting a text amendment for definitions. And as a second item, we are looking to clean up the code in that the FEMA map reference numbers are changing and our code does in fact, um, reference those and we'd like to just make sure that we have the same numbers. And with that, that really is what this is.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Kaufman?
How, how often does like FEMA change and we update this? Because, you know?
This can happen, and this is one of the reasons that we want to put the auto adopt language that, and we already did have that. We said these text numbers and as FEMA updates the maps, we would automatically adopt that. But what we want to do is, is strike the reference to the map numbers because in fact, this has happened two or three times prior to this during my tenure in a decade. And so, you know, I guess I can't answer as far as how often they'll do that, but they do come to the area periodically and, and change map areas and therefore change the numbers.
Do we have any other questions? Call for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of TXT 13-
If I could jump in with a quick-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you.
Was there a correction on the-
Yes, and there was a correction. On the attachment, there is a reference to, let me find this. Sorry, I didn't have that tabbed. Yes, I believe it's page 13, and there is, it's called the historic structure reference, the definition. It does reference Section 12.242032635, and that instead should be 18.24203.2635. Thank you, Claudia.
Thank you. Can you have the motion with the correction, please?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of TXT 13-00010, flood hazard areas and FEMA compliance, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance, including a change to Page 13, section as it's currently noted, 12-2, or, excuse me, 12.24.203.2635, should be changed to be section 18.24.203.2635. And I can make the findings.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Walk seconds.
Make the findings?
I can make the findings with the, with the said change.
Alright, with that, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Alright, let the record show the motion passed 6 to 0. Okay. Moving on to case number TXT 13-00013, definition of medical offices. Can we have staff, please?
If it's okay, I will address the Planning Commission from the, from the DIAS. Claudia Hansen, Planning Engineering Manager, regarding TXT 13-00013, definition of medical offices. This addresses an issue that we've had for a number of years, being in the IC zone. IC and IB have always been kind of funny creatures that we've had to deal with over the years. One of the main issues is with the use of offices, and specifically, medical offices. Right now, medical offices, so a typical doctor's office, chiropractor office, dentist, anything like that, is considered part of a medical facility day use, so like an outpatient surgery center, and those two have been lumped together. This pulls out the dentist's office, the chiropractor, any of the medical offices, away from the definition of medical facility day use, and puts it in with office, just a general office use. So it'd be the same as, as an attorney, CPA, anything like that. And so, the one thing that we aren't, are not changing with this is parking. Parking with a doctor's office generates a lot more need for parking than, say, an attorney or CPA. And so, we don't recommend that you change the parking requirement, but this will allow the land use of a medical office, just the doctor's office, to be the same as any general, excuse me, as any general office, and not to be considered the same as an outpatient surgery type facility. And I am available for any questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open public comment. I do have a request to speak form. Ken Crater does wish to make a statement.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I think this is a great change to the code that's long overdue. For years and years, I've had projects that I've worked on, clients that I've worked with, where it just makes sense to allow a simple medical office, doctor, you know, doctor, dentist, chiropractor, within the professional office zone. There's a lot of office buildings out there that are empty right now, or not empty, partially empty, where I think this will maybe help fill some of those up. But also, specifically, in regards to what Claudia mentioned, the industrial business and industrial commercial zones, is by allowing this to happen, let's say you have some sort of, you know, minor industrial accident in the IC district, now, instead of having to drive miles to emergency room at Washoume or something, hopefully, they could find a urgent care facility within a half a mile and get quicker treatment. And so, I think it's a good thing. It'll cut down on traffic within the city, and I think it's a good thing. I would like one clarification, though, from staff, and that is in regards to urgent care. I'd assume that if you have an urgent care facility where there's no surgery, it's daytime only, obviously, the most of them are seven days a week, and normally, in most urgent cares, anything that's deemed major is referred over to a specialist or the emergency room, that that would also fit within a physician type use that would fall under the professional office, because as we've all read and know, it's harder and harder to get general practitioners to come into the medical field because of everything going on right now, today, in the US healthcare industry. So you see a lot more of these urgent care facilities, but it would seem to me that that would fit really well, too, within that definition of professional office as we have. But all in all, I support what you're doing. It's a great change to the code. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to disagree with somebody who's supporting an ordinance that I'm bringing forward, but I don't believe an urgent care would be considered a standard medical doctor's office.
Thank you. Commissioner Wysocki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff, Claudia, is urgent care have a different definition than does standard medical? I know outpatient surgery does.
We don't pull it out specifically. Urgent care isn't a separate land use type, but I would say it would be closer to a hospital or an out care, outpatient facility than it is to a doctor's office.
So, an urgent care, does an urgent care have a specific definition? I mean, is it a specific?
No.
Okay.
I can look and see, I can get you some definitions on hospital and outpatient.
I mean, I'm just thinking that maybe that's something that's dealt with down the road as far as defining medical offices versus urgent care. But right now, I thought they were all the same.
The, I'm sorry, that what were all the same?
Urgent care falls in the same as medical offices.
I'm just thinking, we just reviewed.
The one in the north?
The northwest.
The one in the northwest on Robb Drive?
Yes. And that was looked at separately. That was not considered-
But that was because of 24-hour use, I thought. That's what made that special, because it was going to be open 24 hours a day. That would be the only difference between urgent care and a standard professional office. So, is there some additional definition that needs to go along with the medical office?
I would not be comfortable bringing an urgent care in with a standard doctor's office. Standard doctor's office, you have an appointment. Typically, you come in, your appointment's at 3:00, and you're there for an hour. Urgent care could have any number of people at any, at any time that they're open. So, it would really be a different traffic flow than a standard doctor's office. Urgent cares that I'm familiar with have typically a large amount of people at one time, which is not a standard operation for a general office. You don't have people just showing up at a CPA.
Right. And I, and I agree with you, because there's a specific group, hospital group in town, that combines their general practitioners, family doctors, with, in their urgent care facility, and although they just see between said hours, but the urgent care may be open additional hours. So, is it something that needs to be clarified?
We can clarify that, that it's, that it would not be part of, that an urgent care is not considered part of-
Okay.
Offices, but it is part of an outpatient facility.
Because although I understand what Mr. Crater's saying, to me, urgent cares are 24-hour operations, and I believe that we should be looking at those as we do now.
Correct, and I don't believe they operate the same as a, as a general office.
Right.
And we can, we can put that clarification in there, sure.
Okay. And we are making a recommendation to council, so to my fellow commissioners, would it be okay with you guys in a motion if we propose that staff make that clarification without bringing it back to us unless you can do it now in two seconds? Or just propose it to City Council with that text amendment? I'm, I'm okay with it.
We can put wording together to make that clarification, present that to City Council. If that's what you choose to do.
Commissioner, I mean, other commissioners, I- I would agree. I feel that a clarification is needed, because that is something that should be addressed. So if it can be done, then we'd like that. Do you have another comment? Because we, we are still during public comment, but is it quick?
Yes, one quick additional comment. For years and years, I took my kids to a doctor's group in town that didn't take appointments. It was walk-in, and it was a pediatric group, one of the largest in town, but again, just to clarify, it sounds like that still fits in the definition of an office, because that's kind of the same as urgent care. Urgent care is non-appointment, but there's also many other doctor's offices in town where it's just a walk-in, but it's still just a regular doctor's office. So, just wanted to bring that up, too.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for any further questions. Concerns, motion?
Question. Commissioner Olivas, so is the distinction, the 24 hours versus the walk-in, is that-
It's the general use of the, of the site. If it's, if it functions similar to any other general office use, typically, they're eight to five type of use, appointments, longer stays, or not longer stays, just say like an hour or so for an appointment, where an urgent care or outpatient, outpatient facility has less control over how many people are coming in. The outpatient facility is typically a larger, more intense facility. Medical transfers, things like that, it really functions differently than a standard office does. If that helps.
Thank you. Any further questions? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Wysocki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of TXT 13-00013, definition of medical offices, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendments by ordinance, along with a, a definition to be brought forward by staff for urgent care facilities and outpatient facilities that are not currently discussed in ordinance. Go ahead, Claudia.
Or if we could clarify those uses within the existing definitions, to add any definition, we'll bring it back to Planning Commission, but if you, so, if you choose to do that, we can do it that way, too.
I can bring it up for discussion. I'm, I'm okay with a clarification of uses going straight on to City Council. That's my motion.
I'm okay with that as well. Do we have a-
Commissioner Coffin, I'll second the motion.
Do we want to discuss this any further? Okay, I do have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Please let the record show, the motion passed 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number nine, Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wysocki?
We did not have a meeting last month. We will have a meeting upcoming in this month.
Thank you. Item number 10, staff announcements.
Just a couple, going down to number four, previous actions by council. The planning in progress report for the Planning Commission was accepted by City Council, and that was forwarded to regional planning. McCarran Crossing was postponed once again till the May 8th meeting. The second reading of UNR Farms was also postponed till the May 8th meeting, and on the May 8th, we should hopefully have a Planning Commission appointment. And we will let you know as soon as we hear. And that's all I have.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, I was-
Question for Claudia first, sorry, if I can interrupt. We, I thought we were going to have a special Midtown meeting, did I miss that in the announcement?
We did. Michelle sent out an email to everybody asking who could attend, and not everybody has responded. We won't name names, but if you have not responded, if you could please respond to Michelle ASAP.
Thank you.
And on that note, in the future, if you could just kind of keep that third Wednesday open, that would be great. That is kind of our backup meeting. We dropped that as a standard Planning Commission meeting, but we'd like to keep that one open in case we do need to have workshop or a carryover meeting. So if you could, in general, keep that third Wednesday open as well. Thank you.
Mr. Teneer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are a couple of things I just wanted to update the, the commission about Fred Teneer, Committee and Development Director, and one is about onsite visits. You probably received an email, or likely received an email, about if you have conducted onsite visits, that you disclose that as part of your deliberation. And in the future, in the future Planning Commission meeting, I'd like to have that discussion a little bit more in-depth with you about onsite visits, because in the public right now, there's some discussions about onsite visits, and, and again, as we know with technology, there's a lot of ways to do onsite visits. If you've lived here a long time, you may know a, a project very well, or you just may check out Google Map and look at the site also. So there's many ways to do onsite visits, and in the future, I'd like to have that discussion a little bit more with, with the Planning Commission at a future PC meeting. Also, training, I know in the past that staff has offered training, free training through the American Planning Association, and I appreciate the people showing up that can show up. Again, we like to emphasize that because we don't have a formal budget for training, that when the free training comes up, I strongly encourage the Planning Commissioners to attend. And in the future, if we find out other training, trainings we can conduct here at Planning Commission, well, we'll do what we can to, to do that, to offer that to the, to the Planning Commissioners. And the last item is regarding citizen engagement. The city is working on a new citizen engagement tool that's more of an online blogging tool for, for the city, and we'll be launching that around May 8th of this month. And in a subsequent Planning Commission meeting, we'll be giving a presentation to you about that program and how it works, and how the Planning Commission can use that as part of your process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask a question?
Of course.
If we go to trainings and there's more than three Planning Commissioners that show up, does it have to be agendized and a meeting?
I would recommend that doing what you do right now is coordinating through Claudia, and to ensure that we are not in violation of any open meeting law. So, if there is a training, I would reach out to Claudia or to Michelle and, and reserve your seat, and at that point, we'll know if we're good or not.
Okay, thank you, Fred.
Can I ask a question also? Commissioner Stapleton. I look forward to the conversation on onsite visits. I just wonder if that's with or without the applicant, if that matters, or you just want us to talk about if we've been out to the site. I think it is important if we can get out there to go, so I look forward to that discussion. And then also, we were given the revised bylaws. Is there a reason we have these? Were these recently revised by council? Just a question for staff.
Sure. And actually, I sent that out, because if we do, in the future, if we do have a discussion about the onsite visits, and there's something that we need to change in our bylaws, I wanted to make sure everyone has an updated version of our 2009 adopted bylaws.
So is there something about onsite visits in the bylaws?
There is not. We strongly encourage the Planning Commissioners, in your process of deliberation of coming up with the findings of fact, strongly encourage you to- up with the findings of fact, strongly encourage you to attend the site or go to the site if you can. But right now, it's not in the bylaws. It's not required.
Commissioner Locke?
Just a quick, one more quick follow-up question. So, do you want us to talk about our onsite visit experiences as we're speaking kind of naturally, or is that something we're going to decide later?
My recommendation is to have that discussion later. We'll have that discussion later about what that looks like. Again, what we're doing right now, I mean, there's a lot of standard practice that's going on. Each one, the commissioners do it maybe a little bit differently. Let's have that discussion at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Coffin.
I have just one more comment. Fred, it's nice that you came to the meeting and you've been present, you know, the last few. I know I appreciate it as a commissioner and you being here, so...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other announcements? All right, moving on to agenda item number 11, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How about we have a discussion on site visits?
That sounds like a good idea.
Thank you. At our next meeting.
Noted.
Noted?
Noted.
Okay. Any other suggestions? All right, moving on then to item number 12, initiation of a text amendment regarding zoning classifications of annexed land and sphere of influence. Claudia? Or no? I'm sorry. Didn't see you sneak up there.
Turn off your mics on.
Mic, microphone?
Is it on or is it not?
It's not on.
Okay, there we are. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, this is a request for the Planning Commission to initiate a text amendment in order to reinstate language related to the zoning classification within the sphere of influence. Essentially, this is Table 2 of the land use element in the master plan. This section was removed in 2011 in an effort to streamline code. However, staff believes that the previous format provided greater clarity for all involved. Essentially, this is the zoning translation table that, again, is in the master plan that lets us know what, how land uses transfer from Washup County to the City of Reno. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission initiate work on the text amendment so we can bring it forward to you for discussion, and I am available for any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton. Is there a reason, are you just giving us a heads up about this, and that it will be, or I'm wondering why we're hearing this right now, and just thinking that if there are future changes to the, is it the code?
It is the code.
That that is helpful, and just thinking about the two that we had tonight on the flood ordinance and the medical facilities, that just to have a head, those things show up sometimes at the end of the agenda, and I feel like I just wish I had a little bit more background when I went to look at it. So I don't know if this is possible, but a heads up just at the end of the meeting to say, we've been working on this part of the code, and we're going to bring this to you guys. I don't know if anybody else would be, would benefit from that, and I don't know if that's what you're doing right now, but that would definitely be helpful to me, just as a brief heads up, you know, going into the next meeting, we'll be looking at this section of the code.
We are asking for the ability to initiate work in order to do this. This is a request for the Planning Commission.
So when this comes back, if you choose to initiate, when it comes back, you will have a full staff report analyzing the issue and explaining what the outcome is.
Commissioner Stapleton, I would be supportive of initiating, of asking staff to work on this and to bring a draft to us, if other commissioners would, I'm not sure we can discuss. And I guess my question included also a future request to have, you know, a heads up about when we're going to have code changes on the agenda. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wieski?
I'll second that motion from Commissioner Stapleton to move forward with the text amendment.
All right, I'd like to call a vote then. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Let the record show, the motion passed six to zero. A motion to adjourn.
You still have public comment?
Oh, I guess we do have public comment. Thank you. I have number 13, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public, to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items on this agenda item. Like to open public vote. Do we have any request to speak forms? Thank you.
No, we don't.
Seeing none, I will close public comment. Moving on to item number 14, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Commissioner Stapleton.
Great. Thank you for a good meeting. Have a good night.